Good morning. I wish to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners on Wednesday, April 26th. I will note for the record that all three Commissioners are present in the Nat U Hill Room. We will start with our public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmless policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. We'll now move on to department updates. I think we have Ms. Kelly with us. Good morning.
Good morning. So just a few updates for you. As a reminder, the White House has released an official statement stating that the National COVID-19 Emergency Declaration will be expiring on May 11th of 2023. COVID-19 boosters will still be available for free while supplies last. The Health Department does still have free COVID tests available. The public can walk in from 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, and the Public Health Clinic does still have COVID-19 boosters available.
Any questions or comments, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions. Thank you for the update.
I have one question. I understand that people, is it 65 and older, are eligible for a second booster?
Yes, so that is correct. So currently, the monovalent vaccine is no longer available. It is just the updated bivalent vaccine, and those who are immunocompromised or over 65 are eligible for an extra dose.
And is there a, are you supposed to wait six months, eight months? What's that timeframe for the time between the bivalent vaccines?
Yes, thank you. It is six months.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we'll move on then. Thank you. Beth from Parks and Rec is here. Good morning. Thank you for walking over.
Thank you. Beth Kuzart, I'm the Community Recreation Director with the County Parks Department. And Penny has asked that I come in today and give you a synopsis of our summer day camp program, which is getting ready to start the end of May. It is CARST Day Camp. It's based out at Carst Farm Park. It is the longest-running youth program in our department. It runs from May 30th to July 28th, Monday through Friday. It's open to elementary-age kids entering grades 1 through 7. As far as activities, it's a pretty typical day camp program. We go to weekly field trips. We swim at Bryant Park Pool twice a week. We utilize the splash pad out at CARST. And then otherwise, we do lots of arts and crafts, games, sports. Autumn Brunel, our staff naturalist, leads a lot of nature programs for us out there. We have this camp garden, which is pretty cool. We started taking registrations last month, and we are, the registration is ongoing till we are full, and we're about at 80%. So we have a few spots left, and I imagine by the time camp starts, we'll be full or close to it in most of the sessions. Staffing, my camp counselors typically, well, this year, they're all IU students. I put them through a week-long training right before camp starts. They will all be certified in CPR and first aid, AED. What else? We have lots of families that come year to year after year until the kids basically age out, so we get lots of positive input on this program, so we're pretty proud of it. So, any questions?
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just particularly appreciate the camp garden. It's amazing how many children are under the impression that food grows in packages on trees. And it certainly does not hurt for them to learn otherwise.
Yeah. We actually get them, Autumn has a way of actually getting them to enjoy pulling weeds and watering it, and you know, so it's a pretty cool thing.
Getting your hands in the dirt can be a lot of fun.
Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you for the update.
And how do people register their children?
We're taking all, it's all online registration this year. You can access the registration from the county website. We'll forward you to the registration page for our program.
Thank you for coming over and for the update. And I believe we have Mr. Parker here. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm good. What about you?
I'm doing okay. It won't take much of y'all's time. I just thought, after the weekend's events, you might appreciate a little bit of an update, so that's what this is kind of geared toward. Y'all, no, we all came off the Little 500 Weekend, so I just wanted to give just a little bit of information to let you know that went from a public safety perspective, from the Sheriff's Office perspective, anyway. But as you know, there was a lot of planning that went into that thing. So the first thing I would tell you is, just prior to this event, you know, a week or so, the Board of Judges, Judge Deinkoff, put out some guidance to law enforcement about how arrests would be handled during that event, and given us some guidance so that we could minimize the actual placements into the jail. And so with that guidance, there were ROR instructions, release on overreconnaissance, and some different bail instructions. And what that helped us do, because of the judge's early involvement in that, is to keep those bookings down to, into the jail, and that increase in our jail population minimal. So just to give you the kind of the stats on that, there were 47 total bookings into the jail over that period of Thursday at, in the morning to Sunday. So kind of till Sunday morning. There were 47 bookings. There were 31 of those that were misdemeanors, 12 were felonies, and then we had about three out-of-county holds. So when we started that weekend, our jail population was at 192. When we finished the weekend, it was at 212. So the entire weekend, Little 500, our jail population only went up by 20 people. Today, we're back down, we're down to 204. So, you know, I think it speaks very well that we can go through an event of that scale and able to keep that down to a minimum, and it was very, very, very helpful. I got to give a shout-out to Chief Deinkoff and his staff there at BPD, Chief Jolie's there at IU, Chief Jimmy Durnell, the State Police. All those agencies worked very cooperatively together. We had a off-site booking here at BPD. They allowed us into their agency to do that, and that helped speed things up, too. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Pizza X. You couldn't go anywhere without seeing a Pizza X there for public safety. I don't know how many pizzas they sent out, but it was unreal. So, you know, very helpful, because you're involved in long hours there. You can't really leave, and it was very helpful to have that. And our staff, we had folks volunteering to work that off-site booking session. We had guys working over, coming in early on shifts, working late. So I'd, I want to give our jail staff a lot of credit here, and just let everybody know that we appreciate our partnerships here with the other agencies and our folks here, Moving on, a quick update on the jail. We now have five of our blocks, of our 10 blocks, completed with cleaning and painting and making them more livable. So we're, I think when we brought Tony on board, when we brought our facilities coordinated, we had one done, and that time, we've got four. So we're moving along very, very nicely. So we've got J-doc, sorry, J-block, D-block, C-block, B-block, and H-block are all done. What's coming up is A, I, and E. So we hope to have those done over the course of the next month or so, and we should finish out, I'd say, you know, June-ish, we should have all of the living blocks, and then we'll start moving into the, like, the seg blocks and then the more common areas. So moving along nicely. All of the new televisions and the clocks have all been installed in all of the blocks, and that's really, really helping our inmate population with having things to do. You know, we all discussed, you know, that clock thing. It's working, so I know we've got some, I think maybe you're coming over this weekend, aren't you, or this week?
Friday.
Yeah, Friday. So, you know, I think you'll see some of those changes that, and I think you'll see attitude changes, too. You'll be able to see the guy sitting there, you know, having a, you know, conversations and playing cards and doing things there that are keeping their minds occupied, and it's really helping with the behavior of our facilities, of the people in our facilities here, though. So that's just kind of the update and the facility. I did want to touch base on some, just in the interest of keeping everybody apprised. I know we've had a lot of talk about the new facility, the old facility, what we can do now versus what we've got to wait to do, and we've talked a lot about mental health. I just wanted to give you just a little, a few facts. Right now, in our facility, right now, we have 35 what our social workers there have defined as severely mentally ill. So that's about 17% of our population. So what I would like to see us do is start moving towards actionable things that we can do right now to help service that population. And there are some things we do, and I don't want to get into it right now. I just want to let you know that we're thinking about that, and we would like to have discussions about that with you and the public. And I would want to point out, too, that the judges have talked about this, too, and it's, I don't want to give the impression that we have people in this facility that we're holding there that, you know, depending on who you talk to, should or shouldn't be there. That's an opinion piece. But a lot of these folks have committed very serious violent crimes, but that doesn't mean that while they're there, we should not be providing services to them. And that's what I'm referring to here. So just asking for some time maybe to come and speak to you all about things that we think that we can do, and we'll have to work collaboratively on all of those things to improve that situation in our current facility, which will then carry over to the new facility. Does that make sense to y'all? Okay. All right. That's all I had for you.
Do you have a minute or two?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first of all, I would like to perhaps sit down with you Friday afternoon after. I'm part of another group that's going through the jail, but-
Absolutely.
Last week, I found out about a pilot program that the state is doing called Integrated Reentry and Correctional Supports for Individuals with Substance Abuse Disorders. They're running this as a pilot in five counties around the state right now. They have apparently found that it's so successful that they're going to do another three counties this coming year, starting July the 1st, and I've asked that Monroe County be considered. And so I want to be working with you and with the sheriff on any kind of application that's available. They've already indicated that certainly we can be on that list of consideration. Eventually, they'd like to have this in all 92 counties, but I think that we are in a unique position to be one of the people that could show them the way forward with stuff.
You know, it's, I don't know if you had my notes before I came up here somehow. You got into my folder with your mind. One of these things in here was the need for a substance abuse professional in our facility. It's, there are two other things that I was going to mention, but that is actually one of the things that I think would be very helpful. I've talked with Kyle at length about this. I've talked with the sheriff at length about this. I've talked with our two folks there who do a phenomenal job in our jail right now, our mental, our social workers. And I will tell you this, with the confines of our facility and the prevalence of the issues that we have in terms of mental health, they're completely reactive. They go from person to person to person to person. And what we would like to be able to get to is the place where we are actually, you know, setting appointments, that we're going to meet with you every Monday at 9:00, and then again on Wednesday and check back in with you. It's just not that way right now. So thank you very much for that, because that is exactly the type of thing that I'm referring to here.
Well, and if I understand the program correctly, it starts with entry into the jail itself, and then there's ongoing programming while they're there, and then follow-up as part of the reentry back out into the community. And so they're seeing really successful-
You've had to have my notes, because the second thing is a caseworker as they leave out. So you want to guess the third one?
Well, but this would be funded by a grant from the state, which-
Yes.
Would really make it a lot easier to get into place. And if it's going to start July 1, let's get ready.
Okay. Well, I sure appreciate the time and allowing to come in and give the update, and I look forward to seeing you on Friday then.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Is there any other department with an update today?
Kim Shell is-
Okay, we have Kim Shell with her hand raised. Ms. Shell, you're muted. Can she be promoted to panelist, please? And we have Mr. Jimenez also with his hand raised. Ms. Purdy, is that one of our staff members? Do you know? Jimenez, Colin Jimenez? Okay, well, then we'll go on to the next part of the program. At this time, then, we'll move on to public comment. These are for items not on our agenda. The comment time is limited to three minutes, and if you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone or raise your hand on Zoom. You are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and whether or not you're a resident of Monroe County. Is there anyone here in the Nat U Hill Room who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll start with Mr. Jimenez. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. You're muted right now, sir. TSD, can you unmute Mr. Jimenez or allow him to speak? He's taking his tan down. So Mr. Shelton from the Chamber of Commerce. It's your turn.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton, yes, with the chamber, but speaking again at this moment on behalf of court-appointed special advocates or CASAs. Want to make sure you and the public know that our spring training will start in just over a month. It will start May 22nd and run through June 14th. Applications will be due in just a few, well, next week, really, May 5th. So this is an excellent volunteer opportunity for people to help children who are in the court system, not because of anything they've done, but because of what their parents have either done or not done. You would advocate for the children. You would speak for them. Over half of our children are under 5, and of course, can't make good judgments or speak for themselves. They all just want to be with their parents, obviously, no matter how bad things are. So please take the opportunity to learn about this. You can go to monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link. There's a frequently asked question page. There's the application. You can fill it out online or download it and print it and mail it in. Then after you would be, have, you would have a background check, since you would be working with children, and then you would have the training. It'll be about 33 hours, and you would learn about the laws in the state of Indiana, about what a CASA does, about the services that you would be interacting with, and then you would, in effect, become the eyes and ears of the court, a separate set of eyes besides DCS, to help the court know what's going on with the children, what's going on with their parents. The parents will have been given a number of items they have to do in order to be reunited with their children, and you would help the court monitor how this is going. So please think about it. Please do get an application. We have some 30 children right now for whom we do not have a volunteer, and I appreciate the opportunity to share this info. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Is there anyone else who wishes to give public comment? Seeing none, let's move on to the next item on our minutes, which is approval of the minutes.
I move approval of the minutes for April 19th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. Were there any additions or corrections? I didn't see any either, so call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes from April 19th, 2023 signify by saying aye. Motion passes 3 to 0.
Easy for you to say.
Apparently not. Okay. Next item.
I move approval of the claims docket accounts payable April 26, 2023.
Second.
And we have Ms. Gregory here with us this morning. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The accounts payable claims docket for today, April 26, 2023, totals $912,891.23.
It was a little lighter than previous weeks, yes. Any comments or questions?
No, I don't.
No? Thanks. I didn't have any either, so I'll call for a vote on approval of the claims. Oh, is there public comment on this item? Thank you. I go from one time when we need it and the next time when we don't. Thanks. So all those in favor of approving the claims docket from April 26, 2023 signify by saying aye. Motion passes 3 to 0. I will note for the record that we have reports from the clerk for March of 2023 and from weights and measures that covers the period of March 16th through April 15th. And I always enjoy looking at the weights and measures report, because it's so detailed and the little, yes. Anyway, on to new business.
I move approval of Solar Energy Solutions Service Agreement, fund name 2018 GeoBond, fund number 4811, the amount of $930.
Second.
And we have Mr. Kreider here to talk with us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Solar Energy Solutions in the amount of $930 to remove 13 solar panels from the Justice Building array. This work will allow the roofing contractor to increase the slope around the dryer vent stack to prevent standing water.
Excellent. Questions or comments?
No, I'm just very pleased to see this moving forward.
Me, too.
Yeah, I know we have to do this, but it's going to change our energy bills, so I just, we just need to be aware of that, which is an unfortunate side effect.
It would be nice if we could find a place to plug them in someplace else.
I'm actually exploring that. I'm actively looking at removing the array from the Justice Building and relocating it at a different facility.
Excellent. And this is one of the things that had to wait for better weather-
Yes.
-to happen?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay, well, I appreciate you moving forward on it then, at the first available opportunity.
Right. We thought about it, and originally, they were going to move them all to the other, one side of the building, clean the roof membrane, and then move them back. And I'm not crazy about what the solar panel array has done to the roof membrane, and I think it's just a good idea to move the array.
Excellent. Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Solar Energy Solutions Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did I hear, not hear? Okay, okay, that's okay. Motion passes 3 to 0. Thank you, Mr. Kreider.
I'm usually not quiet.
I move approval of a proposal from Nature's Way, Inc., Landscape. Fund name, County General, fund number 1,000, the amount of $34,006.55.
Second.
And we have Mr. Kreider again.
All righty. This request is to approve the proposal from Nature's Way, Inc. for landscaping services at the Monroe County Courthouse, Curry Building, Health Building, and Johnson Building. This proposal includes maintenance service in the amount of $18,598.35 and a seasonal flower rotation in the amount of $15,408.20 for a combined total of $34,065.55. The scope of work includes spring cleanup service, supplying and application of mulch, supplying and planting a seasonal rotation of flowers, monthly bed maintenance, fall cleanup service, and leaf removal.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, the selection of plants has already been made, hasn't it?
It has.
It would have had to have been.
Yeah. Really, what needs to happen next season is I need to submit, if we're going to change anything with the planting, I need to submit that in December or January, similar to the live wall situation.
Sure.
Yeah. But they are, he sent me a catalog for fall bulbs, so we can investigate that and have some spring color.
Yeah, I'd very much like to look at that. I think that probably we would benefit from moving to more native plants in our plantings, and it's nice to demonstrate exactly how attractive that can be.
That sounds great.
Commissioner Thomas? No questions. Thank you.
I wanted to share just a quick story. About a week and a half ago, I was in the courthouse, and I saw a couple, they were kind of, they just wandered in, they're looking around, and I asked if I could help them, and they said no, that the outside of the building was so incredible-looking that they wanted to see with the inside how it matched up with it. But they were here at IU to visit their granddaughter, and they happened to just be attracted to the courthouse. So thank you for the nice work.
You are.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Nature's Way, Inc. Landscape proposal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I heard you that time. Motion passes 3 to 0. Next item, please. Thank you, Mr. Kreider. Sorry.
I move approval of Indiana Family Health Council Title 20 TAMF Agreement, fund name TAMF Futures, fund number 8150, and the grant amount of $112,078.
Second.
And we have Ms. Kelly back with us.
Yes, so this is just part of our annual grant funding that we use for the Futures Family Planning Clinic. So in addition to this funding, we operate off of our Title 10 funding and clinic revenue. So our Futures Family Planning Clinic includes services such as path exams, breast exams, STI testing, HIV testing, and birth control.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I've been approving this for about 10 years now, and it seems unchanged the whole time.
Commissioner Thomas?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for the work.
Yes, definitely. And reading through what was in the packet, the amount of detail and the kinds of things that you're required to do with this are pretty extensive, but thank you and your department for always being on top of this. This is an important kind of thing to provide our community with. This is part, truly part of public health.
Yes, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Indiana Family Health Council Title 20 TAMF Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3 to 0. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Next item.
I move approval of an e-image data microfilm scanner agreement, fund name Recorder Perpetuation, fund number 1189, and the amount of $8,616.
And we have Recorder, oh, sorry.
Second.
We have Recorder Amy Swain with us. I'm a little getting ahead of it myself here.
Yes, I'm Amy Swain, the Monroe County Recorder. I also have Greg Cron from our Technical Services Department here to verify the need for updating outdated technology, as well as to answer any questions that go beyond the scope of my knowledge and expertise. We plan to upgrade the microfilm scanner in the archives to replace the outdated technology that's currently there. It's the Monroe County Archives and is utilized by a number of different departments. The technology there is basically a dinosaur, as Greg can attest to. And so we have looked into estimates for updating that. There is a scanner currently in the Recorder's office here in the courthouse that is a ScanPro 2000. We plan to- We plan to move that over to the archives due to volume of use being higher in the Recorder's Office and replace it with this new scanner. We would also like to put a new monitor and printer into the archives to replace the outdated technology there.
Thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Cron?
Greg Cron, Technical Services Department. The Scan Pro that they're looking at is the same company that provided the Scan Pro 2000 that they're currently using. They're based out of Wisconsin, and those units have been solid. We've had very little support or maintenance issues with them. When we have had to reach out to the company, they were very prompt to get back with us. So I'd looked at a couple of different options for the Recorder's Office, and this was still the most sound solution, bringing the same company back that we're currently working with.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Commissioner Jones.
The preservation of our historic documents is something that's really quite critical, so I'm happy to support this.
Commissioner Thomas.
It's a great idea, thank you.
And with using the same company, would that then reduce the amount of training that's needed for a new system?
Right. The money that is requested here in the $8,616 includes the software installation and training as well. We also get a six-month updated support agreement that we can extend if we want to. Once we're at the end of the six months, we can make that determination, but we're going to see what we can get out of it before we make that determination.
Excellent. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the e-image data microfilm scanner agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of property in-site bulk user agreement.
Second.
And we again have Recorder Swain with us.
We have been approached by a company that would like to create what's called a title plant, which is a repository of property records for their own use. Each record would be watermarked because they are prohibited from using this for resale, and it is a typical bulk user agreement that has been updated to include current code language by our county attorney, Lee Baker. And so this is one that we have currently with other companies like CoreLogic, Black Knight, and even a local Monroe title plant, which is a collaboration between John Bethel Title Company and Title Plus. So it's a standard agreement, but it has been updated to include current code.
Commissioner Jones.
I have no comment.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to follow it first just from the documents, but it appears that this is the standard, this doesn't mean that anybody's documents are going out into the public, and it doesn't.
Correct.
Yeah, this is not really anything much different from what we've done before.
This is their own house library, if you will, that they can use internally, and it helps them avoid having to ask us over and over again for specific individual documents. It is kind of a standard in the property records industry. Other recorders do this as well, and this is a standard bulk user agreement, and we are paid for that privilege.
Right. It was income to the county, not?
I was emailing back and forth with Recorder Swain and with Eric Schmitz about this too to try to fully understand it, so, but other, we're doing this with other companies currently too.
Correct. We already have three agreements in place now.
Right. So is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on property in-site bulk user agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of Doc Pop Existing Contract Addendum, fund name Recorder Perpetuation, fund number 1189, the amount of 3 cents per copy.
Second.
Again, we have Recorder Swain.
So the company that you just approved the bulk user agreement for would like to create an existing library for 30 years' worth of documents, and rather than take time in the Recorder's Office to have a staff person diverted from regular activities of serving the public to do that, we want to contract with our current company, Doc Pop, that provides documents to the public in an online fashion to provide this 30 years' worth of data. So this is an addendum to our current contract to allow for that. And again, they would charge us 3 cents per copy out of the 20 cents per copy that we will be receiving from property in-site. And it's a much more cost-effective way to outsource providing these 30 years' worth of documents than for us to do it in-house.
Yep, makes sense. I have no questions.
No questions. Thank you. Since it's offset, more than offset by this other income, that sounds very, very reasonable. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Doc Pop Existing Contract Addendum. All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Recorder Swain.
Thank you for your time and questions.
Next item, please.
I move approval of a center stone easement with Duke Energy.
And we have.
Second.
You need to poke me, okay? Sorry. We have Mr. Cockrell here.
Yes, as you know, that area, we're around the current Centerstone Building. That building is owned by the county commissioners. That area is involved in a redevelopment program where they're adding a new street and they're adding additional parking kind of east of the building. And as part of that, to maximize that parking that's going to be added for that building's use, they want to move the electric transformer and those a little bit closer to the building. I think there's a photo in the packet on the final page, on page 77 of what I'm looking at. And if you, if you look at the photo, you can kind of see the, the area, which is about, you know, 10 feet further from the building where those, where those transmissions currently are, where the, the current transformer is. So it's simply an easement to move that a little closer to the building so that there can be additional parking.
So is there anyone here from either Duke or city to speak to this? Any comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Thomas.
No question. I guess I wish I, we had had somebody here from either the Duke or from the city to talk about how this impacts, the changes that are going on in that area, especially because I'm still very interested in the Hopewell property as, as a place where we might put our new jail. So I do have some questions about that. But I see that we have public comment. Mr. Cassidy.
Actually, I happen to be the contractor doing that.
Oh, well.
Consequently, as I heard the question that you had questions in regards to, I thought it would be remiss of me to not bring into the public what the circumstances are. The realignment of the parking lots that are occurring, the existing transformer would be in the way to give the Centerstone the additional parking that they need and the lights that are there, so they keep illumination in, in the area. The transformer itself will move back approximately six feet into a green open area that's closer to the building. I know during the Hopewell project in the Centerstone area, what they had done was worked with Centerstone at the time to actually demolish one of Centerstone's houses at the city's expense in order to help give right of way for this transmission to occur. So it moves approximately six feet closer to the building, and it will be in a green curved area. And then all the sidewalks and everything that fits into Centerstone will maintain the integrity of the building and actually make it a better installation as far as accessibility. So happy to answer any questions in regards to it.
So this would not impact any of the portion of the Hopewell property that we might be interested in if we were to be able to put a jail there?
This comes off of the feed from this from Duke will come off of First Street and go directly, actually utilize, there's, the conduit is exactly there now, and it comes from First Street to the south, goes north to the exist, the new transformer location, which is about six feet. So it doesn't impact any of the facilities that Centerstone currently has in that area in any capacity.
And I would guess that the only other thing that it would impact is the parking lot for that Centerstone facility, because the parking is kind of an L around, or the anticipated parking is an L around the Centerstone building with, to the south and to the east. And this, this easement it goes through extends out of the anticipated parking to the south, which is not very, it would not impact and would not be available to build any kind of facility like that.
And I see we have someone from the city here.
Yeah.
Also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
Hi, Patrick Durgis, Engineering Department, City of Bloomington. Thank you, Mr. Cassidy, for the information and stepping in as I was getting myself as a ability to talk. For, for this project, you know, we've, we've worked closely with Centerstone to, to try to make them as whole as possible with this change. Centerstone relied heavily on parking provided with no official agreements from IU help. And so as the city took over that property, we thought it was, well, we knew it was our responsibility to keep Centerstone whole. And so we have worked closely with them to maximize the amount of parking that we can fit on the lot. We've gone through and sought variances to increase the, the parking for them and, and the arrangement of that parking. And I tried very hard to, to make this transformer fit with the parking layout, but it was, it was going to cause them to, to lose a space or two, and so we thought the best way was to relocate this transformer. And then this easement is just what Duke is requiring to allow it. And then the question about impacts the property, this easement is, is on the county property. The county property will be surrounded by this parking lot that will be partially on county property and also on Centerstone property. So this easement would in no way impact any future development use for this area.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify, all those in favor of the Centerstone easement with Duke Energy signify by saying aye. 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 Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, sir. Next item.
I move approval in agreement with Upkeep Technologies, Inc., sorry, service agreement with Upkeep Technologies, Inc., fund name Cumulative Capital Development, fund number 1138, software in the amount of $17,960 for three years.
Second.
And we have Ms. Purdy here.
Yeah, thank you. That $17,960 is for the first year, which includes a one-time implementation charge of $5,000. After this year, for the following two years, it will be $12,960 for the software. This software is proposed for you guys to approve. It would replace a current software product that we're using that no one has been particularly happy with. This software allows for 12 different licenses, and more importantly, it allows for the request for maintenance to occur without someone having to have a specific license to do that. So once, once we can get this up and into place, we will have department heads and their designees, whoever else they want to have, the ability to make a request to our maintenance departments. They can process their requests through this portal that we will have, and the person who's making the request can see in real time and respond to the, to the request. We can create work orders based on those requests, and it's going to provide us for, I believe, a more efficient way of managing our, our maintenance requests that come in through across all county buildings.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
No, it sounds like a good change to me.
Yeah, I'm glad you're making this change, and it sounds like it's going to be easy for users to plug in their requests, so it could come from the jail, it could come from this building, it could come from any, so you don't have to be, have a license in order to put in a request?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, particularly as we look at the jail, will individual jail staff be able to put something in, or does it have to all be funneled through just one person there? Do you know?
I think, so they can ask, they can submit a request through this software, and then it'll be directed to Mr. Gardner at that time, who would then determine, you know, who needs to respond to this particular request, and then it just follows it from that point forward.
And I guess my understanding is that the answer to that is dependent upon who the department head gives the authority.
Yeah.
To enter that information into. And so I don't think it's limited other than by internal policies within each department.
Correct.
And this will also allow for prioritizing items too as they come in, is that correct?
Yeah, definitely. So as requests are made and as issues are identified by our maintenance staff, these will all be put into this software, and staff, we have, basically, we have two, we have Richard Kreider, who is basically over our civilian, what we call our civil departments, and, and Mr. Gardner, whom we contract with, who is responsible for what internally we refer to our justice departments, and they each will be able to prioritize based on the severity of a problem or the impact of a problem, and determine at that time which is, which item needs to be moved to the front of the line.
It also gives us a way to track how quickly things are taken care of and, and also to set up sort of preventative stuff. If we know we need to, to change a filter every six months and things like that, that should show up, correct?
Yeah, definitely. The system has the ability to, for us to set up preventative maintenance protocols. It has, we can do, you know, yearly, quarterly, monthly, whatever we need to do on a preventative maintenance situation. The other thing is it helps us to, if we have a particular unit, for example, an HVAC unit either in the Justice Building or showers or in this building that isn't performing well or is consistently having problems, we can then show that and show why it is that we're going to need to replace this particular item, or maybe we can go back and if it's under warranty, we can pursue warranty repairs. But it's going to help us to be more proactive as opposed to reactive. Right now, we tend to be a very reactive department, and the intention is that everybody, everyone is better served if we can be more preventative and proactive.
And this is replacing software that didn't seem to meet the needs, is that correct?
Yeah, so the current software that we have, it's, it's somewhat difficult, it is not a user-friendly platform, and I will also say, you know, we take some culpability in how we set it up, you know, garbage in is garbage out, and a lack of understanding and knowledge when we went to set up that particular software program, I think, caused some problems in addition to just generally the unwieldiness of this, of that particular software. The other thing, we actually spoke to a gentleman out in Washington who's using this, this particular program, and what both Mr. Gardner and Mr. Kreider really appreciated was the people on his staff who are out in the field who have, use a mobile app, really like the simplicity and the ability to, you know, record what they're doing, upload pictures, and it's just. and the ability to, you know, record what they're doing, upload pictures and just keep that record of everything that they're doing.
Excellent. Is there any public comment on this item? I will note for the record that there was one person who entered information in the chat who was opposed to this, but I couldn't read all of the information, so. Yes, we have one, we have Seth who's raised his hand. You will have three minutes. Please give us your full name and whether or not you're Monroe County commi, Monroe County resident.
Uh, hi, this is Seth Watchford. I am a Monroe County resident. I appreciated Commissioner Givens, you're acknowledging the person in, in the chat. I will, I will use my time to read that so that it can be entered in the poll. I did not actually create this information, but I want to, in support of my colleague, get the full information entered in the public record. Do not approve item H on the Commissioner's agenda. Item one, this contract is for Upkeep Technologies, software is redundant. A dedicated ticketing system for maintenance does nothing to solve real issues. This expense is completely unnecessary and a waste of county funds and taxpayer money. In my opinion, and again, I'm, I'm not the author of this document, I want to, in support of my colleague who did author it, so this is not me in this, but in my opinion, 12 licenses and a $5,000 setup fee is way overpriced for a glorified ticketing system. Item two, the ASI yearly contract agreement is already covering, quote, "all maintenance, repair tools and equipment," end quote. The ASI agreement cost per year is $868,680. As with the proposal for a new jail, this proposal reflects the county's pattern of wanting to spend money on not the problem. An ASI contract and budget data can be found on the gateway system. So I just wanted to read that so that you all can hear that and have that be reflected in the public record. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And I will note for the record that, that was comments from Lea Groen, Groenhofar, I believe. Thank you. Is there any other, anything else that you, my colleagues wish to share? Not, I call for a vote on Upkeep Technology Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of ordinance 2023-10, the Rolson Rezone.
Second.
And we have Mr. Myers here with us today. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm going to present this slideshow here for us. All right. So this is a rezone request from RE1 to AgRR or State Residential 1 to Agricultural Rural Reserve. It is at 4851 North Kinzer Pike. It's in Bloomington Township, Section 8. It is unplanted and the comprehensive plan designates this area as farm and forest. So petition site is one parcel totaling 19.341 acres. Petitioner is proposing to amend the zoning map from State Residential 1 to Agricultural Rural Reserve with the intention behind it to rezone the property and proceed with a commercial site plan filing for the use of a winery on the property. Now, a winery is not permitted in the RE1 zoning district, but it is a permitted use in the AgRR district. There is one condition for the, a winery use in the AgRR district, and that is condition number 53, which reads only permitted on acres greater than five acres or more in the AgRR, FR, or CR districts. If approved, petitioner intends to complete the planning process for the establishment of a winery, including the commercial site plan filing, which is subject to all standards and requirements, including but not limited to parking, paving, landscaping, soil erosion control, and bio retention if necessary. If denied, the petitioner may continue to operate the property as a single-family residence, which was the previous use, or may pursue any of the available uses as outlined in Chapter 833 for the RE1 zone, as long as any of those special conditions that may be listed in that chapter for that particular use can be met. Next, I have several definitions of uses. Through the conversations with the plan commission, as well as in the work session, there's been a lot of discussion about use and also the definitions of event center. So here I have the definitions for our winery from Chapter 802, definition from, for event center, Chapter 801. The agricultural event center, there's not a specific definition for this use, but I summarized it here. It is a conditional use in the AgRR zone, but it's essentially an accessory use to a normal agricultural use of a property. In other words, a property undergoes agricultural use such as farming, then they have this accessory use as an event center. That's kind of how that use falls into classification. Finally, I have the definition for accessory use here. So my mentioning of the term event center here is to distinguish the intended purpose of the winery from other land use classifications defined as event centers. And there are several event center uses described in the zoning ordinance, as I've outlined here, including just the standard event center definition, which is only permitted in a general business zoning district, so that would be a more urban or a commercial district, as well as the agricultural event center, small, medium, and large classification that you see here on the screen as well. So we're looking at, petitioner is looking to do a winery. And the winery definition, as you can see, does include some defining characteristics that pertain to some of its accessory uses, such as tasting facilities, promotional sale of items, and other winery operations. So to further talk about the distinguishing factors between event center and winery, I included some of the definitions or from some of the standards, if you will, for a small agricultural event center. I'm going to add the bold text for emphasis. So this is pulled from Chapter 813, which is a conditional use for a, a small agricultural event center. And that would, being a, being a conditional use, would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So these are some characteristics of a agricultural event center. Again, this is separate from what the petitioner is asking for, which is a winery. Okay, so some summary regarding the previous plan commission meetings. There's a lot of good discussion in each of these meetings. It went to three formal session meetings of the plan commission. So on, in January 17th, 2023, the plan commission members had questions regarding the Highway Department's final recommendation, and I will get to some of those details here in a moment. They also had questions about the overall thoroughfare plan for this area. Plan commission members asked the petitioner what steps he had to screen the proposed winery use from neighboring properties. And several members of the public came forward to speak in opposition to that petition during this meeting, stating concerns for traffic safety along North Kinzer Pike, traffic safety as it relates to a neighboring winery, and other potential impacts from commercial development in this area. Additionally, a list of signatures was submitted at the start of the meeting and distributed to plan commission members. We do have a copy of that and it is in this presentation as well towards the end. The petitioner provided information regarding expected business activities, delivery truck occurrences, and plans to mitigate impacts of the winery on the neighbors. And ultimately, the plan commission decided to not grant the waiver of final hearing and it went to the next meeting in February. Finally, PC members asked the neighbors to submit letters of opposition, and we do have several of those included in this presentation. And a lot of this information is all included in the staff packet as well. So here we have the, the next meeting, which was in February. Staff presented an updated report with additional exhibits submitted by the petitioner, including the letters of opposition from a few neighbors. During this meeting, petitioner provided a detailed presentation that covered traffic concerns brought up by the last plan commission meeting. And the petitioner also provided some renderings of what the winery structures could look like and touched on various aspects of the winery's day-to-day operations and expectations. Plan commission members requested the petitioner prepare written draft commitment and a list of uses he is comfortable with striking from the AgRR use table. That written commitment is in this presentation and included in the staff packet. And there has been a, a new revision of that written commitment to include some more information that I'll get to in a moment. Ultimately, the plan commission voted seven to two to continue this to a third meeting, which was on March 21st, 2023. So planning staff presented another updated staff report with new exhibits, including the design concepts, updated draft written commitment, and an article about real estate from a real estate firm about impacts on a winery on home values that was provided by the petitioner. Staff, during this meeting, drew attention to a previous rezone request regarding an adjacent property that was approved by the county commissioners. It was ordinance 2021-42. It was for a 134.5 acre property at 1300 West Bell Road. And that, the reason behind that rezone, it was from RE1 to AgRR, was to provide the petitioner the opportunity to perform a sliding scale subdivision. They wanted to basically create a small lot for their existing home, and then the rest of it was to be just open land for preservation purposes and other, you know, just basically sectioning off that, that homestead area. So let's see here. Plan commission members asked petitioner if he had any intention to become an event center in the future. And during this meeting, the petitioner stated that there will simply not be enough room for an event center and that he stated that he did not want to pursue an event center, especially with all the neighbor concerns that have been voiced since the start of this process. Okay, so at that last plan commission meeting, the plan commission voted to forward the petition with a positive recommendation to the Monroe County Board of Commissioners by a vote of six to three, and it had three conditions. One, petitioner submitted right-of-way activity permit application. Two, the written commitment be reviewed and approved by the Monroe County Legal Department. And three, the written commitment include additional language regarding a 14-day deadline for its reporting. Here I've included the definition of the Agricultural Rural Reserve District. So we can come back to this if we have any questions about the character of the Agricultural Rural Reserve Zone. Here we have the current zoning map. This is that to the west of the parcel highlighted in red, this large 134 acre property, that's the one that was recently rezoned from RE1 to AgRR. Of course, the parcel highlighted in red is the subject property regarding this petition. And here we have the comprehensive plan. As I stated before, it's designated as farm and forest. Here we have a site conditions map. As you'll note, property only has a slight section that's over 15% in slope. The rest of it is very flat. Here we have an aerial image of the petition site, give you an idea of the kind of homes that are nearby, as well as some of the other landscapes in this close area. The existing home that is on the site has since been demolished. Here's some photographs on the ground. This top left picture is taken from West Bell Road looking towards North Kinzer Pike. And then this bottom right photograph is simply turning left from the previous vantage point and looking north along the petition site. Here I have the draft county development ordinance. So this was one of the items that the petitioner considered in early conversations with planning staff to initiate a rezone request. This is a draft zoning map that county staff, planning staff provide to members of the community when asking about the upcoming development ordinance that is in progress. We're still very much in the draft stages as communicated to anyone using this map, but please note that we did have it currently proposed as going from RE1 and transitioning to the Ag 2.5 district. So the petitioner communicated to staff that this was one of the reasons that he felt that this rezone would be favorable from the beginning. And since then, you know, of course, there's been a lot of comments and a lot of discussion about the suitability of a winery at this location. Okay, so I have some department comments. This is from the Highway Department. This is also included in the staff report. So Paul Satterley, the Highway Engineer, stated that the Highway Department is in support of an access point off of North Kinzer Pike. There was some conversation early on in the process about potentially an access point off of West Bell Road. The petitioner did not want to do that to avoid any issues with neighbors, as well as West Bell Road being a local road, it did not seem suitable to him. And then the Highway Department agreed that access off of North Kinzer Pike would be fine. Ben Ayers, project manager at the Highway Department, stated he will review the specifics of the driveway's proposed location and make recommendations based thereon after receiving a right-of-way activity permit, also known as a driveway permit. So that's one of the reasons why we requested as a condition of approval to submit a driveway, or excuse me, a right-of-way activity permit. The Highway Department recommends at least 150 feet from West Bell Road intersection and further away if possible. Some other items that were in the Highway Department's comments is that North Kinzer Pike was recently reconstructed as part of the I-69 project. Portions of North Kinzer Pike begin to narrow as it continues to the city's jurisdiction. And then a, a bridge on West Bales Road is undergoing reconstruction and is expected to be completed around July 1st of this year. So those last three bullet points, those touched on some of the, some of the discussion about traffic and the strain on the roads that an increase in truck delivery for the winery or increase in traffic due to patrons going to the winery could cause in the area. So this is some emails from Mr. Satterley, the Highway Engineer, regarding details, taking some of those items I just discussed, including the, some details about traffic on the section of road, as well as his statements saying that section of roadway near the petition site will be able to accommodate traffic from the development with no problems. We can come back to this if we need to read it in more detail. Okay, so there were additional comments. So since the last plan commission meeting, petitioner has been providing county staff with email correspondences he's had with various individuals, including individuals from the City of Bloomington and the IU SF. So this slide here touches on some of those discussion points, basically stating that City of Bloomington's representative, Andrew Seabor, touching on some of the details regarding the, the roads in the area that are in the city's jurisdiction, as well as some information about trees that were originally brought up by members of the public that are concerned to public safety along North Kinzer Pike. And finally, stemming off of some neighbor concern for cyclists and runners in the area, petitioner reached out to Ms. Emily Carrico, the IU SF director for, of racing for the Little 500, and she provided a response as well regarding that cyclist ride by Oliver and Butler frequently and that there is no issues with that. So I included some of those email snippets here as well. This one is from Mr. Seabor at the city. And then some details here as well. Oh, this one actually, this, the petitioner also reached out to Representative, I guess the owner of Oliver Winery with some questions about how, you know, details about how their winery has handled various aspects of their business, if they've had any issues with truck driving or being, patrons being overserved, things like that. So these two emails, that's an email correspondence between petitioner and Mr. Oliver, and we can come back to this as well. And I'm sure the petitioner has much more to say about each of these items, but I just wanted to touch on them since they were provided to staff. This page too as well, and this is also included in the staff packet. This is the petitioner's response to PRC questions. PRC is the Plan Review Committee. It's the first committee to hear the petition. So this is a lot of detail in here. I'm not going to read all this. I don't expect everyone to read all this in this presentation, but we can come back to it if there's any questions regarding some of this information. Petitioner will touch on it as well. But basically, petitioner provided this response to planning staff with respect to some concerns that were drawn up by planning review committee regarding winemaking and trucks, noise and nuisance, and winemaking in Indiana in general. The next few slides are slides that show different design concepts for the winery itself. So I'm just going to click through these. There are several different design. There are several different design options, and I will let the petitioner expand on any of these when it is their time to present. Okay, so on this slide, I have the use table for the AgRR district. That is the one on the left with the yellow titles for each category. So you'll note that there's a lot of permitted uses and conditional uses in the AgRR district. The state residential district, on the other hand, has a very small set of permitted and conditional uses. But you'll note that crops and pastage is the permitted use in the RE1 zone, as well as a few other things that received discussion points like parks and playgrounds and other things like that. One of the reasons for the Planning Commission requesting written commitments by the petitioner was to help reduce this list of permitted uses in the AgRR district, and that is included in the written commitment section that was forthcoming. I included this here. The green star with the red outline, that is the approximate location of petition site. This is just some information from the thoroughfare plan. So if we have any questions about road classifications or anything like that, we can come back to this page. The petitioner did provide a response with, in regard to a lot of the discussion behind various aspects of the proposed business activity, including, mostly including roadway activity, travel to get to the site, things like that. But we can come back to this page if we have any questions. And these are some of those exhibits that are mentioned on that previous page. We'll go ahead and just click through them, mostly just about alternative routes to the petition site, as well as just lengths of roadway. Petitioner did provide some final thoughts as well. This is all pulled from the planning commission presentation, so you may be familiar with it if you reviewed that. But I'm sure the petitioner will have more to say on some of these items. Okay, that brings me to letters of opposition. Planning staff did receive several letters of opposition. So these are included in the staff packet, and so I'm not going to spend too much time on them, and I won't read them word for word. But in general, a lot of the opposition from the neighbors or the public was concerned for the traffic increase and the, just having a commercial activity in a quiet residential area. There was also a concern for light pollution, noise pollution, pollution from the farming activities on the site, as well as possible wildlife disruption in the area. Here's a few more, two more on this page, letters of opposition. Members of the public were also concerned about the increase in traffic for this business activity and the concern for Little 500 cyclists, cyclists in general, as well as runners along this route on North Kinzer Pike. Here I have a list that was provided in the first planning commission meeting. Staff didn't get a copy of this at that first meeting, but we did retrieve it from the member of the public that provided this list. So here is a list of neighbors that signed, that petitioned against the rezoning. And I'm sure that many of these members may be present, and the petitioner has spoken to many of these members, I believe, as well. I think that he held a neighborhood meeting on this past Monday, and I'm not sure of the turnout, but I'm sure he will speak more to that. We do have a letter of support. So this came in after the staff packet was published, so I'll leave this on the screen for a moment to get it into your minds and read it over.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, here are the updated written commitments for the proposed winery and the rezone itself. So there are several items in here pertaining to its binding effect, as well as some uses on this page to the right. Some uses that are stricken from the AgRR use table. I'll note that most of these would be rather, would be considered rather a nuisance to the area. We also have some additional restrictions and operational guidelines that are committed here in Section 4. This is pertaining to events, small events such as seasonal things, meetings, other private gatherings, art fairs, charitable events. And then we have some outdoor music listed here as well, lasting no later than 8:00 PM. The petitioner will provide more information regarding the commitment, I'm sure, if you have any questions on specifically. Here is the next section of that. So we do have a binding effect in Section 6. Basically, the commitment will bind onto the owner of the real estate and subsequent owners, and each person acquiring an interest in the real estate, including tenants and leases. We do have an effective date section, as well as the recording. So this was, Section 8 was an addition that was requested as part of one of those conditions of approval, and that is basically that this commitment must be recorded within 14 days by petitioner, and if that 14 days, those 14 days lapse, then planning staff can authorize the recording of this commitment. So the legal department did review the written commitments. They did provide some notes to that, the written commitments. So we might see a final revision to the written commitments based upon this suggestion, and this suggestion what came in just a few days ago. So petitioner has not had the opportunity to look it over yet, but this could be something that could be conditioned into the approval of the rezone if that is the direction you All right, finally, that brings me to the recommendations. So staff, planning staff recommended to the planning commission a forwarding of a positive recommendation to the Monroe County Board of Commissioners based on the petition's compatibility with the Monroe County comprehensive plan and subject to the Highway Engineer and MS4 Coordinator reports with the following conditions. One, the petitioner submits a right-of-way activity permit. Two, written commitment be reviewed and approved by the Monroe County Legal Department. That has been completed. Three, the written commitment include the additional language regarding a 14-day deadline of its reporting, and that has been completed. And finally, planning commission voted six to three to forward this petition with a positive recommendation in addition to those above conditions of approval. I will now take any questions.
I would appreciate being coached on how to conduct this, Commissioner Thomas or Commissioner
So like, first we can hear comments from anyone on our board or questions for staff would be good, because this is pretty detailed. It might be the place to start.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Is, for a winery, is it required that the grape, that grapes actually be grown on the
Let me go back to our definition here, one second. So winery is defined as an agricultural processing plant used for the commercial purpose of processing grapes, other fruit products, or vegetables to produce wine or similar spirits. So I don't believe it specifically states anything about the wine actually being grown on the site, but the petitioner is intending to grow the grapes on the site.
Okay, thank you.
But I thought he was also having, I choose.
Yes, yes, I do understand that. I was just wondering if the, if it's necessary to grow the grapes there, at least some of them, right?
It's not, and it's going to take some time to develop the plants, and they were planning on importing.
Yes, and.
Produce.
My greater concern is the very intense level of spraying that's needed for grapes to grow in this climate.
Interesting.
Commissioner Thomas?
I do not have any questions.
Well, I have a few, and I drove out there yesterday to look at the property and to get a sense of what we're talking about here. One of the items that was in here was that the petitioner has indicated they would have a maximum, that they would have two events, no more than two events per month. Is that an average, meaning that there would be 24 across the year? Or is that, would that be a maximum of two in any given month?
That's a good question. I think I would defer to the petitioner for that answer.
Okay. Then, if this is written in, does this carry forward to the next owner, meaning is it written in as part of the conditional use?
Yes, so in my understanding from the written commitments, and county legal staff can chime in on this as well, is that it does run with the real estate of the written commitment. It's binding to the real estate. So those uses that are restricted, that are referenced in the written commitment would still remain restricted if the petitioner were to sell the property to a different owner. And those same conditions outlined in the written commitments, or those, excuse me, those commitments that are outlined in that document would be binding to whoever owns the property next.
And that would be contingent on it being recorded?
Right.
Correct.
And then I was very concerned about the width of Bales Road, because when I plugged the address into my GPS, of course, it took me up North Walnut, Old North 37, and onto Bales Road. And that does not seem like a road that can take a lot of heavy trucks, especially if they're going in opposite directions at the same time. Kinzer Pike is much wider up in that area, but also I can understand, having driven onto Bell Road, why there might be some concern about the property owners there. I'd also like to ask, and this is for you, Mr. Myers, is there, I know that some outdoor burning is allowed. Is there restrictions on the time of day, volume of material, things like that? Because I would assume that there would be some things that would be burned also at this location.
Yeah, so outdoor burning, that would be a good question for the fire territory. Planning staff, zoning ordinance doesn't have any specific language about outdoor burning, but I do suspect that there are some standards with regard to the size of the fire pit or the height of the flames, that sort of stuff. But the fire territory would be the best authority behind that.
And I guess I would think too, that there are times when it's very hard to call an end to an event at exactly 8:00 PM. And so I just want to put that into the record, that's, while it's admirable, it's not always within anybody's control.
Yeah, if I could, maybe just for the public's edification, so it would be IDEM, and then depending on the time of year, the fire district may say no open burning. I think the bigger question is what would they be burning? Would they be like a gas fire pit versus actual bonfires of materials? Those are very different pollutants, and that's important. But for, Mr. Myers, if you would walk the public through how something like this could be enforced, time, noise, how do we enforce this in the county?
Yeah. So, yes, there is a noise ordinance that is in the county code. Complaints regarding noise are forwarded to the Sheriff's Department. So I don't know exactly what their procedure is for addressing noise complaints, but we do, planning staff does have a decibel reader that we have used in the past to evaluate some of our standards that are in the zoning ordinance. With particular uses, sometimes like sawmills or other uses like that, that can be, that can become a nuisance to nearby property owners. So we do have one way to measure sound, although it's not used that frequently. And then other methods for enforcement, if any of the conditions, the written commitments that are in that document, there's a section in there as well that talks about if any of them are broken, that is subject to enforcement by the county. So a lot of enforcement instances within the county planning department is complaint-based, so we would rely a lot on property owners to voice concerns through the property complaint process. And then planning staff can go through the proper enforcement channels that sometimes include fines or withholding of permits or land use certificates, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
So now you want to do it from petitioner, petitioner's representative.
Okay. Right, I'd like to now hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative. Please step up to the mic, state your name, and also if there's a sign-in sheet, go ahead and sign that. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Tim.
Please speak directly into the mic so that.
Certainly, yeah. My name's Tim Rolfsen, R-O-L-F-S-E-N.
Welcome, Mr. Rolfsen.
Thank you, and thanks for having me. Hopefully you're going to stay close by and hit the forward button on the slides, Drew. All right, members, I kind of have a long script here, but it took me a while to get all these thoughts down on papers, but I'll probably vary from it a little bit. Thank you for your time and your consideration today to consider the rezoning petition from RE1 to AgRR for use as a winery. I'd like to use my time to clarify both the intent of the proposed project and to address the concerns of the neighbors. We understand there may be some lingering concerns about the nature of the tasting room, which has been referred to in the past as an event center, though that's far from our intent. I'd like to further talk through the steps we've taken since the last meeting to not only meet directly with the neighbors, but to better understand their concerns and also address and mitigate those concerns as much as possible. I hope our discussion today will demonstrate how our winery and tasting room will benefit the community, adhere to local land use guidelines, and not negatively impact neighboring properties. Drew, if you could go to the next slide, please. All right, so this is kind of what you saw the last time, and I just wanted to clarify a few things. It's designed to replicate a farmhouse. The driveway to the parking lot would be 280 feet from Bell Road. It's set back from Kinzer Pike, so we can use landscaping to soften the appearance, but it is designed to look like a house in a barn. That's the scope and the scale of the property, and you'll see that in a couple of slides. Okay, go to the next one. This is the back. The back is north, northwest facing, which is not aimed directly at the neighbors' homes. Again, there's a driveway on the north end of the property for deliveries of trucks. And I'll just kind of, as a side note, talk about fruit. Every winery I've ever been at, or every winery I've ever spoken to, as a course of doing business, they purchase grapes and juice from the outside. It's just, it's a fact of life. You can never own enough land to grow your own grapes and have it be economically feasible to try and do that. Okay, go to the next slide, please. This is a top view of what the winery would look like and its position. This is at scale, and so you can see the two driveways. The first driveway is 280 feet from the intersection of Bell Road and Kinzer Pike. From the top corner of the parking lot, we have 165 feet to Lisa Jacob's house, and 460 feet from the front of her house to the center of the patio. Okay, go to the next one, please. And this is a view from the west end of the property, kind of three-dimensional, again, to kind of put everything into scope and scale of what it's going to be like for the neighbors. Can't guarantee that the vines are going to be quite that luscious-looking the first few years, because it takes time. But you can see the size is, the winery itself is about the size of a horse barn, and the house, if you will, the tasting room, the main section that you see there is about 2,200 square feet, and the entire thing is about 3,500 square feet. So I would just want to clarify that, because sometimes when you look at the design concepts on their own, it looks pretty monstrous. So first, I'd like to clarify the nature of the proposed facility, as we're no way attempting to be an event center or otherwise make events, large or small, the focus of our operations. It seems the potential for very unlimited outdoor events has confused the intent of our winery tasting room with an actual purpose-built event center, which unlike our winery, hosts weddings and other big gatherings as a primary source of revenue. Through discussions with neighbors, we've come to realize a lot of misinformation has been distributed, which led to concerns we heard from neighbors. In contrast to an event center, our proposed facility would include a winery, which is designed to process fruit and produce wine, and a connected tasting room that will provide a relaxing environment for our patrons. For what it's worth, the inside is an open concept, soft seating. It'll feature two small 163-square-foot rooms for people that want, I will invite some of their friends over for private tasting, or if somebody from the county, or a cook, or some other company said, hey, we'd like to have a meeting, can we rent one of your rooms? That's about as far as an event goes for us. And for reference, our tasting room has a maximum capacity of 60 individuals, and the parking lot will have 40 spaces. While one resident mentioned they were under the impression there would be at least 200 vehicles visiting the winery daily, that's very unlikely, given the size of the winery itself and the footprint we anticipate the building and grounds to take up. We'd love the opportunity to host no more than two events throughout the month. It doesn't mean necessarily 24 events a year, because you have to consider, not too many people want to be at outdoor events in the middle of December, or January, or February. But in those particular months, we would host no more than two events when we would like to have them. Our focus is on wine production and sales, not having events, and providing unique intimate tasting experience for our patrons. The occasional outdoor events we would like to host would be supplemental to our core business, and are only considered for the purpose of raising awareness of the winery and our products, celebrating local agriculture, and fostering a sense of community. We're willing to impose pretty restrictive restrictions on the property, and I'll discuss those in a minute. We believe that will show our commitment to our primary business as a winery and a tasting room. And stop me anytime if you have any questions, please. While several have mentioned they had no issues with the winery, and this was my personal outreach to some of the neighbors, because once I finally got the petition and saw who signed it, and I noted who had written the letters, I thought, well, let's have a chat, because some of the neighbors didn't show up on the petition, they didn't write letters. They didn't necessarily have an issue with the winery, but they didn't want to sign a petition because they didn't want to make waves in the neighborhood. I understand that completely. We did receive one letter of support, which was shown today from the Ead family. So also had a great conversation with Bill Oliver, everybody knows who he is around here, and he was able to provide me with some comments from his experience. We also had discussions with a couple of individuals who signed the petition, and after the discussions, it seems their concerns were largely mitigated, once we gave them accurate information of what we felt traffic counts were going to be, and the steps we would take to address their concerns. So, what are those steps? Let's summarize what we've done so far, just to ensure everybody has accurate information and understanding of how seriously we're taking the neighbors' concerns and addressing them. Our commitment is to truly be responsible and considerate of the neighbors, work closely with law enforcement, community leaders during the course of our business operations. Perfect. Traffic and safety, we've heard a lot of concerns about increased traffic and safety, although it's riding bicycles and driving along Kinzer Pike, including comments from one individual that attended the neighbor meeting earlier this week. We learned many were anticipating drastic increases in the number of vehicles on the road because of the winery, but through our discussions, through our discussions, their realization of the size of the winery, we're looking to have, I believe, many of them, those concerns were eased. So let's talk about what we're expecting. So we're not going to hit, you know, the start button, and things are going to, you know, take off like a rocket ship. It takes time to build a business. And so we're anticipating, looking at the first 24 months, we anticipate the highest traffic count to be about 100, 150 a day. I will acknowledge that when it first opens, you're a new kid on the block, that's probably going to be different, but over time, things kind of level out. Hours of operation that we're suggesting is from 11 o'clock to 8:00 PM. And to address your concern about, can you dial it back? Let's just say, for example, we want to have a live event, you're paying a band for a specific period of time, and if I want them to play from 4:00 to 8:00, they're going to turn off their music at 8:00 on the nose. So I think that's probably a pretty easy thing to control. We're anticipating 50 to 70 cars per day over seven-hour period, approximately seven to 10 cars an hour, which is about a car every six to eight minutes. We specifically discussed increased traffic with one concerned neighbor, and mentioned the possibility of installing signs to alert drivers to slow down in front of the winery, and are currently considering the options that are available to us. We did discuss the traffic pattern with Paul Satterly, the highway engineer, who indicated that the very light traffic for this section of road would be able to accommodate patrons with no problems, and that vehicles turning left into the development will experience little or no delay. Truck traffic. Further, and with respect to truck traffic, to bring in grapes and juice, which I believe was a concern of one of the commissioners, we're estimating a very minimal number of trucks during the production season, likely only needing somewhere between, I think I've got 17, 18 truckloads on there. And I need to be clear, it didn't format very well, did it? So in-season truck traffic, and this is assuming peak production. In 10 years, you know, we're not going to get to 10,000 cases overnight, but I've tried to use a worst-case scenario in this case. 10,000 cases a year, 65% red wine, over a 10-week period, we'll be harvesting and making wine. I'll let you go through the math, but it amounts to about 17, 18 loads. Thing you need to understand is that, once our grapes start coming in, we'll be producing enough fruit on the estate to offset that by narrowly half, so the truck volume really goes down after that. And just for reference, Oliver Winery farms about 63 acres of wine, and they'll produce off there about 300 to 360 tons of fruit, which is approximately three to four times more than what we'll need, and they navigate some very narrow precarious roads in Monroe County without issue. Okay, Bell Road, please. Is there, could we go to the next one, Drew? Did we miss the one for Bell Road? Well, let's talk about Bell Road. Residents also had concerns about winery patrons driving down Bell Road, and while the entrance to the winery is going to be about 250 feet north, there's already a dead-end sign at the entrance to Bell Road, as you see there. I took that photo myself a couple of days ago. At the entrance, we discussed with Paul Satterly the possibility of adding a no-outlet sign, which he says can be very effective. And further, I'd be happy to pursue no parking signs, just to further, you know, not have people think that if the parking lot looks full, they can just go park on the side street. First, it's not conducive to it, because the hills come up on the side of the road like this, but still, I would be willing to pay for signs that say no parking. Cyclists and alcohol consumption. There we go. We heard concerns about the safety of cyclists in the neighborhoods in the area, given the increased traffic on the road and patrons drinking alcohol and driving, so I reached out to the IU Student Foundation, and Emily Keriko, who is the race director for the Little 500, replied back that she had no concerns with cyclists riding past a winery. She mentioned they often ride past Oliver and Butler wineries with no concerns whatsoever. This was corroborated by a discussion with Bill Oliver, who, also an avid cyclist, mentioned that unlike a bar, winery patrons don't get drunk. Bill mentioned that they have a large visitor count, while there have been a few minor accidents at their highway intersection, none of which attributed to intoxication. Similar comments were made by Jason Sims, the golf facility manager at Cascade's Golf Course. When I went out there to rent it, I asked him, I said, you guys serve beer? He says, since 2012. I said, how often have you run into situations with golfers coming out of the driveway inebriated? And Jason, like Bill Oliver, talked about their server training. And just like them, all of our servers and staff will be required to undergo safe server training, and will comply with the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission requirements for that training. And let's go on to sound, please. All right. A concern that was initially raised was the potential for the dispersment of sound to neighboring properties. And so I contacted Michael Stucker at the IU School of Music. He's a highly-regarded sound engineer, he's got his own business, and he's also the chair of the Audio Engineering and Sound Production Department for the IU School of Music. He's also the chief technical engineer for John Melling Camp. I invited Mr. Stucker out to the property, we walked it together, he looked at it, he measured everything. Mr. Stucker prepared a report that will be in a packet that we can provide you shortly, detailing his findings. But the sound reaching the closest neighboring property during any outdoor event with the limited musical artists that will experience, and I'll qualify that statement in a second, would be the equivalent to a two-person conversation, just you up there having a conversation. He further provided decibel specifications, noting any sound from the winery would be much less than the general noise from the highway and the roads surrounding the property. You'll see in this slide various decibel levels. You can go to the next one, please, thank you. I've circled where our decibels were going to be, 60 is the high end of what he's estimating the sound levels would be, and that's without any buildings. That's just if we put a band out there with nothing up, no vines, no parking lot. He's estimating that we'll be at the low end of it of 30 to 50, once the buildings and the parking lot are up, because they will help shield the sound. Michael anticipates this sound dispersing to the neighbors from the winery at worst would be 30 to 50 decibels after the buildings have been constructed. He also pointed out during the summer months, when most live music will be played, the air is heavier, with prevailing winds coming from the southwest, further mitigating the distance sound can travel. Notwithstanding the general dispersment of sound based on his analysis and expertise, we also discussed additional limitations contained in the report that would prevent the dispersment of sound, including positioning of music toward the winery building, building out various areas for performance, or including features to reduce the sound, and then other options that are very reasonable and doable. So we'll just stay on this slide right here, but the final concern we heard surrounding events, the final, as mentioned, we have a small tasting room in an indoor capacity of 60 patrons and 40 parking spaces. The square footage is only 2,288 square feet. As mentioned, we're not looking to hold large events, but rather offer an intimate surrounding where our guests can enjoy wine and the stunning view afforded by the property. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Sarah, and she's my attorney from Creed de Volle. She could explain the restrictions that we've talked about and committed to.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Sarah Jones, and I'm a lawyer. And if we may, we actually do have a packet of information that we'd like to bring forward, if that's okay? And what's in this packet is some of what Mr. Rolfsen has already discussed. There are also additional revised commitments, so we wanted to talk through that. And just to kind of quickly go through what's in the packet, the top document that you have are revised commitments, even since what Drew had up on the screen. The second document in the packet is actually a red line, so it easily shows the changes to the document from what Mr. Myers previously talked about. The sound engineer report that Tim was just mentioning is also in there, so the full report that he provided about the dissemination of any sound that may happen to neighboring properties is in there, as well as all the recommendations that they discussed about additional limitations on what they may impose and what they may do to further restrict any dispersment of the sound. There are, we also provided you copies of the supportive letter and some other comments that were provided in support of a winery. And then the final documents in that packet are just the renderings and the depictions that Tim had up on the screen a little bit ago, just to show you where everything's going to be situated on the property, the reach to the neighbors and that information. And so I just wanted to take a minute to walk through the commitments. Drew did a nice job earlier talking through a lot of this, but I know that there were concerns and questions that were raised, both by the commissioners and by some neighbors, both about restrictions on the property, as well as really what would happen with the property if it were to no longer be a winery, and really how that's all controlled. So if I may take just a couple of minutes to talk through that, if you look at the red lines that's in the packet that shows the changes, the first page is just a couple changes that we had talked with Drew about, that really just make a couple of clarifications and clerical modifications. But if you look in section three, right at the top of the second page, we've had a lot of discussions, and there have been a lot of discussions at the various meetings about an event center, and really what this property is going to be, and what an event center is going to have an impact on with the neighborhood. And as Tim was mentioning previously, that's not the intent of the property. He doesn't want to use it as an event center. He really wants it to be a winery for the production of grapes and a tasting room for the patrons. So we've actually gone ahead and included in the restrictions in the commitment that it's not going to be used as an event center. So as Drew mentioned previously, an agricultural event center is not defined in the ordinances, but it's included in there, and so we've just taken that and completely stripped it out, that there aren't going to be any, and there's no right to have an event center, whether it's small, intermediate, or large, within the agricultural realm. We've also included, and Drew mentioned this previously as well, the definition of an event center that's in the ordinances isn't actually permitted on this property anyway, but we went ahead and just expanded and put that in here as a restriction, in the event something that would ever change in the future. We've completely removed that possibility that this property would be used as an event center. So I know that there were a lot of prior discussions around the concerns with event centers on this property, and really the impact that it would have with weddings and large gatherings and that kind of thing. And because that truly is not the intent here, we just went ahead and put it in the commitments that would be recorded upon approval of the rezoning. So hopefully that takes some of the concern of the large number of patrons, any large events, that kind of thing that was discussed at a lot of the prior meetings off the table, because that's something that the petitioner is willing to completely remove, and specifically state it in a recorded document. And then I just wanted to reiterate as well, and I believe this was mentioned previously, but as far as enforcement goes, I know that there was a concern raised at one of the previous meetings by the commissioners of enforcement of the commitments themselves, and Drew mentioned this previously, but it is in sections six and eight, both within the commitment, that this is recorded, it continues with the land, unless the planning commission or this board decides to revise it in the future. This would continue in the future as it's restricted and documented here for any future owner, any tenant, any other person that has a right to the property. And then the enforcement is detailed out a little bit further in section eight, and it really does come back to the county and to the commission to determine enforcement as it relates to these commitments specifically. So just want to make sure that we restated that, because I know that those concerns were raised about how that would be enforced, how the timing and the issues with that would be enforced, and I know that Drew was mentioning earlier about potential fines, limitations on what could be done, and things like that, and those are things that would be within the commission's discretion if there was a violation of this commitment in the future, whether it be past 8:00, more events than needed, or doing something that otherwise isn't permitted, based on the restrictions that he's willing to impose. And so, is there a question? It looks like maybe.
I do. You indicated that an agricultural event center will not be allowed, and yet he's talking about two events per month. I don't, there's a bit of a disconnection here for me.
Sure, and I think that's the difference between what is actually an event versus what is just an accessory used to having a winery in and of itself. So having patrons on property, having a musician that's playing music out on the patio that may be considered an event, or an art fair or something like that, that doesn't actually rise to the level of being an actual event as defined in the ordinances. And so there is a distinction there of what's actually an event, and so the events that are listed that... are listed that really get to a wedding or a large corporate event, that there's going to be a lot of people, and it's going to be for extended period of time with a lot of noise and sound, that's not what he's looking to do here. And so there is actually a distinction in the ordinances between what would be permitted versus what's an actual event center that I think caused a lot of concerns in earlier meetings and discussions.
So what, what, under what definition then does the kind of events that Mr. Rolson's talking about, what does that fall under then? What kind of definition can we look to?
Yeah, I think where it falls is really more of just an accessory used to having a winery in and of itself. And I think if you go to wineries, there are small gatherings at times, small meetings, that kind of thing, that's more of what he's looking to do versus what would be considered a true event, where there's a lot of tables brought in, a lot of catering brought in, a lot of music brought in, a ton of people, all of that, that's not the intent here.
Do you have questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I had actually meant to ask earlier, will anyone actually be living on this property, or is it going to be the business only?
Yeah, so we've talked about it, and Drew, maybe you can explain this as well. One of the things that we considered was that we would live on the property, but I don't think that property could be divided unless it's zoned agarrar to begin with, because at the size of the scale, I think it has to be, it's 19.341 acres, so you have to have two 10-acre lots, so it can't be split. But we had talked about it, and it remains a possibility, but kind of have to see what happens. The other thing regarding an event, and I guess sometimes I wish I hadn't even used this, an event for me just means that twice a month we may have a musical guest playing quiet music out on the patio. And I know if anybody's been to a winery, you don't have to answer that or not, but nobody wants to go to a winery and sip a glass of wine with loud music blaring in their ear, so that kind of controls how loud it's going to be to begin with, but all of that said, you know, the sound engineer from Mellencamp has said, "This is what it's going to sound like when it gets across the field," you know, "to the neighbors." But it's not an event, and when I, I mentioned something about a fair, and I wrote this in the letter to the neighbors, you know, a fair to me is inviting local artists, sculptors, painters, you know, wood carvings, people that want to bring their things, set it up, and let people that are coming to the winery look at it, view it, purchase it. That's about as, as much of an event as we're talking about. So again, we're not talking about trying to drive revenue by hosting big events like weddings, or saying, "For the pleasure of our customers," we're going to invite in a low-key musical artist to play Hootie and the Blowfish, or Zach Brown, or Dave Brubeck on the patio. I mean, it's just going to be low-key. Those days for me are long in the past, you know? I got out of IU in '81, and that's in my rearview mirror, so. Anyway, that's what I'm talking about, and hopefully that adds a little clarity to it.
I do have a question for County Legal also. You're proposing two different driveways into the property, is that allowed under our current ordinance? You had one for deliveries and shipping, and then another for patrons?
I would have to check with that, because I know there are certain properties, residential properties particularly come to mind with, with limited street frontage that are only allowed to have one. I don't know the rules for this type of use.
I believe I talked to Paul Satterly about this, and I can go back through my notes and look at it, but I don't recall him raising a concern, but it may be more a legal issue, I suppose, than zoning.
We have our highway director here who might be able to answer this also.
So yeah, and I talked to Paul again this morning on this petition, and he did not have a concern, and it would be allowable on this type of property to have the two driveways, and probably preferable than just the one for not being residential.
Thank you.
Okay, so, anyway, you know, in, in closing, we believe we've reviewed and addressed all of the concerns by the neighbors and the officials alike, and had some neighbors voice their appreciation for better understanding of what the scope of this project was going to be by giving them correct information. We further believe our proposal aligns favorably with the goals and objectives of the current comprehensive plan and the proposed Monroe County CDO, both of which encourage economic development and diversification, as well as agritourism. Over the last nine years, this property has remained largely unused, despite having been listed for sale multiple times. I think when I look back at the record, Danny or Denny and Dale Bell listed it back in 2014. So despite having been listed for sale multiple times over the years, and in what I might say several of the hottest real estate markets, it remained unsold. So while the property was seemingly unattractive and unsuitable for residential uses, it's currently zoned, or for any of the other permitted uses under RE1, if the rezoning petition is approved, our winery will support local agricultural and agritourism industry, contribute to the preservation of open space, and help maintain rural character. We believe our petition to rezonate agarrar represents the highest and best economic use of this land, and will promote local art, culture, and commerce, and aligns with the objectives, again, of the comprehensive plan and the proposed Monroe County CDO. Furthermore, the winery and tasting room will also promise to generate positive economic benefits, adding to the eclectic tourism, agritourism, bolstering the local economy, and supporting other businesses. Our business will create local job opportunities, both directly and indirectly within our operations, through increased demand for goods and services from local vendors. I have three other pages, but I think you get my point. So commissioners, I hope we've presented everything to you in a way that, that makes sense, and that we, we've literally taken every step possible to address neighbors' concerns, and where we did find a concern, that we found an appropriate answer to those concerns by reaching out to stakeholders, the IU Student Foundation, the people currently own businesses in this industry, and then speaking out to the people that are in the engineering department, both of the city and the County Monroe for the traffic. In my previous presentation, I cited traffic accident data that just indicated there is very, very little. In fact, Hank Duncan, I spoke to him yesterday via email, and in 20 years, there's hardly been an incident on Kinzer Pike between pedestrians and cyclists and moving vehicles. We don't expect that to change, but all we can do, again, is, in response to neighbor concerns, is talk to the experts.
So I believe?
I do. I'll grab it.
My name is Kevin Buckeye, I'm a planner with Krieg de Valt, and if you would like, I might be able to add a little clarity to your question about the event part of this discussion, a winery hosting an event versus an actual event center. If you, it'll just take a few minutes if you want to hear from it. Okay. The land use table in the zoning ordinance is set up so that there are various groupings of land use classifications, agricultural, residential, business, industrial, so forth. Each of those categories in the table starts off with accessory use, and there's a definition for an accessory, so that's an accessory use to any of the agricultural uses, for instance, or for the, the industrial uses, if you will. There is, then the, there are definitions then for what's called a principal use, and that's the primary or the main use on the property. So within the, the land use table, the implication is that if it doesn't use the word accessory, every other use listed there is a principal use on the site. And so what we're talking about here is the, the difference between what Mr. Rolson is proposing and a purpose-built event center, is that the events that he would like to host are accessory to the running of a winery. And I've, I've not been to a winery yet that didn't have opportunities for some kind of event on their property over the course of the, of the year. The, and as has been mentioned before, and I won't belabor the point, but we're, we're not talking about an event center as defined in your ordinance under, under any way, shape, or form. This is a winery that is seeking to also host occasional events, as outlined in the commitments, as an accessory use to the winery operation itself.
Thank you. So I believe at this stage, please correct me, Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Jones, that we will hear people who are in favor of this rezone, then we will hear from people who are against the rezone, and then Mr. Rolson will have an opportunity to respond. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would ask, just given the late hour and the number of people that are here, so that we make sure everybody can be heard, I would ask that we follow our normal procedure of three minutes per commenter.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to hear from anyone who is supporting this rezone. If you are, please step up to the mic or raise your hand on Zoom, and I cannot see, given the current screen in front of me, if there's anybody who's raised their hand. Thank you, TSD, you're always so accommodating. So is there anybody here who is in favor of this rezone? If so, please step up to the mic. I don't see anyone, and I don't see anyone on, in the attendee list on Zoom. Is, if there's anybody who is opposed to this rezone, please come up, and you have three minutes, please state your name and sign into the sheet, if you would please, it helps with our record-keeping. Thank you.
Jana Hasty, Monroe County. First off, the property has been used for primarily farming alfalfa hay for many years. We live in a peaceful and tranquil, tranquility on Bell Road, two tenths of a mile from the corner of Bell and Kinzer Pike, where Mr. Rolson is proposing this winery. This is simply, this is not simply a request for rezoning or a proposal for a winery, this is a proposal to dramatically change the character of the area of our homes and our daily lives. We have lived in our home for 37 years, we raised our son here. We have created a peaceful retirement oasis in a quiet rural setting at the end of the Dead End Road, of two acres and a 90-year-old log home. This home is our dream, and our dream will be considerably diminished by this proposed winery. The goals of the homeowners and the goals of the winery will be in direct conflict from the moment it is built. The homeowner's first priorities will always be residential, while Mr. Rolson's will be commercial. No matter what assurances Mr. Rolson offers the residents, his goal will be to turn a profit, and his business practices will evolve toward the goal in, in response to opportunities that present themselves, like retreats, weddings, and other events. People choose to buy homes in an area that had two qualities, rural and residential. This winery introduces two new qualities, public and commercial. These are not aligned with the homeowner's choice of location. If we wanted to live in a busy commercial area, we would have purchased our homes in one. This is not only about homeowners, this is about the importance of preserving rural spaces that are increasingly diminishing in our county. As we look at the possibility of annexation in the Bloomington area and increased commercial space encroaching on rural spaces, we have the responsibility to protect these spaces. We have considered this carefully, and the information I am presenting to you today is not simply from an aggrieved homeowner, but from a resident of this county, thinking broadly and in the long term. I ask you to give it the same careful consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
She'll pass it back, you don't have to come back here.
My name is Paul Green, I live 1265 West Bell Road, Bloomington. Mr. Myers did have a video, which I would like for you to see. I don't know if he still has it or not. If he don't, I have a copy of, of it in my pocket on disk, or on a flash drive. What I'm here for is all this stuff that I just handed out to you, I emailed to each of you commissioners, and I don't know if you read it or not, but I gave it to you in print. Excuse me, I'm not a good public speaker. We are opposed to the winery out there for several different reasons. It's going to change, not only change the area, it will, you know, we have horses, cattle, chickens, we're a farming community out there. And we want, we fought, me and six others, fought drastically against the city to keep it that way, keep them from annexing it. We want to keep that area as a farming community, and we very well, very much like the area the way it is. We don't care if he wants to grow grapes in there, that's fine. We don't want the winery in there. He talks a lot about Oliver Winery. Oliver Winery is pretty good size now. I remember when it started out in a house. Once the house burnt, they built a, a larger facility, and it's increased ever since. If he starts a winery there, it's going to be the same thing. It's going to start out whatever he starts it at, and it's going to keep increasing in size, as long as there's property there for him to do so. And we, like I said, we would really like to keep that community quiet and so forth. We have a lot of problems with the roadway out there, that's, which nobody has really seen that much of, but that road is only 16-foot wide, and you try and take those trucks at eight, eight and a half feet wide down that road, somebody has to get off the road for, to pass. And if you happen to have high school students running for track at the same time, or bicyclists from training for their little 500, that cuts down on the size of the road. So my time is up. I don't think it's, the three minutes is right, but I'll give it up.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Hello, my name is Wilma Fiskus, and I live at 1175 West Bell Road, and I've lived there for 65 years. And Nathan Eads is a very dear friend of mine, and he does own a house next to me, but he rents it, he doesn't live there. And I, I just wanted to add that, and thank you for your time.
So for context, she's referring to the homeowner who submitted a letter of support that was in our packet, that was sent via email, and that Mr. Myers presented to us. That's just for context.
Right, thank you. Sorry, are there others who wish to speak? Drew, do you have the video that Mr. Green referred to?
I do not have a copy of that video. It was provided originally on a jump drive, and that was not saved on the desktop in that room during the planning commission meeting when it was first provided. that room during the Plan Commission meeting when it was first provided.
It's a video of the drive down that 16-foot-wide roadway, some of the turns, the narrowness of the roadway. It was taken in a truck, not a full-size truck, but a consumer's pickup truck truck. But that's what I can tell you about that video, which you probably noticed that when you drove yourself, right?
Yes.
And it's the same thing that I noticed when I drove out there. Yeah.
Yes. So seeing no other individuals who wish to speak, Mr. Rolson, would you like to respond to any of the things that we heard today? And can we keep this also to the three minutes that we provided today?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sarah Jones, again, just for reference. Yeah, just to respond to a couple of the comments, I know that there were concerns raised about growth of the property and eventually just doing weddings because he wants to. I think that's specifically prohibited with the commitments that he's willing to impose on the property. There obviously are also limitations on growth with the nature of the size of the property, right? So the anticipation of putting the vineyard on a large portion of it, putting the building out there as well, there's not much room for growth beyond that. So I would just ask that you consider that as well with some of those comments. And then the comments too about, obviously, he's going to have weddings or things like that in the future, those are also specifically prohibited in the commitments, and that's not able to be changed unless you were to come again before this board and there was a decision to change that at that point. But again, there's no intention to do that. There's no desire to even do that either. Also wanted to just mention that, obviously, a winery is farming, and within the winery and the farming, he anticipates having a tasting room that really will hold small numbers of people that come to enjoy a tasting, possibly listen to some live music on the back porch, and then head home. I think the other thing that we really wanted to mention as well with some of the concerns about the roads out there, there have been a lot of conversations with the Highway Department and different officials in various areas, and there are no concerns with this being put in and with the rezoning going through from a roadway standpoint. So just wanted to make sure that that was a reminder that there were a lot of comments out there about the concerns with the road, and while there will be some increased traffic, it's not going to be extensive with the plans that are anticipated for the property. And then the last thing that I just note is that this really does align with the comprehensive plan policy in promoting agritourism and growth in the county as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I will note that any expansion would have to go back through planning and through building, that this is not something that you can just add on to. Is that correct, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, so through the commercial site plan filing, that's a, it can be reviewed administratively by staff, and any expansions would have to go through a site plan amendment process. It is my understanding that there are some situations where a commercial site plan filing or an amendment to can go to the Plan Commission as well, although I have not encountered that specific instance myself. I do know that that is a possibility, but I don't know how that could be applied to this situation specifically. I don't know if that's a condition of approval that this board can offer. Is that any amendments to a site plan or the site plan itself go to the, to be reviewed by the Plan Commission? Because the default for commercial site plan filing is administrative review by planning staff.
But there is at least an administrative review, and it's, people don't get to just start to build willy-nilly as they choose.
Correct.
Right. Thank you. So at this point, comments from my colleagues?
Yeah, this is, as usual with many planning petitions, a rather difficult decision. I'm not overly concerned about the traffic, given what the experts have had to say about that, although I don't really consider seven to 10 more cars on a road that's very seldom used can seem like quite a bit of extra traffic to people who have lived there a long time. I also, in general, am not terribly reassured by buffering, which can take 15 to 20 years before it's actually particularly effective, which I don't consider to be very fair to the people who live right around there. And this is a pretty residential area. Another personal problem that I have is when people say that land is being unused. I think what they mean is that humans aren't currently using it. It is being used as habitat, although this particular property doesn't offer a lot in the way of that. Really, my biggest concern about this is the kind of spraying that has to be done to grow grapes in this particular environment. It's actually way too humid here for grapes to grow easily, and I know that they do require a lot of spraying of fungicides, which is not something that I think is a great idea in such a residential area. Having said all that, I haven't heard much of anyone else be concerned about the things I'm concerned about, so I'll have to admit I'm still thinking about this.
Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, so I have been party to the discussions about this since it first arrived at Plan Review Committee. And on the one hand, it's nice to see that somebody is interested in doing something with this property related to agritourism. But here's the thing, I didn't know about the spraying, so I appreciate learning that from Commissioner Jones. One of the things that I sometimes do is, I think, what if it were my neighborhood? And, you know, what we have here are residents who have lived in that area, some of them for generations, who don't want to change. And, you know, it's nice to have new ideas and new plans and new concepts, but I go with the residents on this, and maybe there's somewhere else in the community that would serve this kind of function better. And part of the issue too, I would say, is that, and I do want to say that the petitioner has been great to work with, really provided a lot of information when we asked for it, has been super helpful. And I know they made an effort to reach out to the neighbors. It just didn't work, for whatever reason. But part of the issue too is that we are, we tend to move forward with these things, we get commitments, and we can't enforce them. We can say we can enforce them, but we can't really enforce them. Let's be honest, we've had a lot of problems, and it's not so much the fact that it's going to come back to us with a lot of phone calls and emails and a lot of hair pulling because we can't help people because we're not lawyers. The bigger issue is, I don't want to call that, cause that aggravation for the people who live there, who have to find somebody to call to email. It's not really my discomfort I'm worried about. It's the fact that, you know, we've got other places in this county where we've been told, yes, we're going to just do this, and we get phone calls and emails because they've expanded, the hours are longer, the crowds are bigger, the events are more often. It happens, and I am not saying that anybody intends for that to happen, but typically what happens is, it does happen. And it's, sometimes it's a new owner that that happens under, or a new management or something. I'm not saying that there's any nefarious intention here at all on behalf of the petitioner. I think the intentions are good. I think the petitioners worked diligently on this. I think it sounds like your erstwhile neighbors are okay with a winery, and so if you want to do a winery without the space for tasting events, sorry, events, gatherings, et cetera, then it sounds like you could do that. And maybe that's the thing to look at next. That would be my suggestion, because that does fit more with the community surrounding, that surrounds this property. So that's my take on it. Thank you.
Did you want to respond to the fungicide?
Yeah, if I may, and I'll be quick about it. First of all, a couple of points. Tasting room is just a natural part of what a winery is. They're one and the same. They operate together. I'll ask counsel to address your concerns about enforcement of commitments. He can do that better than I. And I'd like to ask Mr. Rolson to come forward to talk a little bit about his approach to pesticides, which is going to be on the natural side of things rather than chemical pesticide operations.
This is not typical, just so you know, because this is not a time for back and forth. This is the time when we are deliberating and making a decision, so.
I understand.
It's up to my colleagues. I'm, you know, I just want to make you aware of that.
And I respect that, but that point was raised.
It's up to my colleagues.
Yes, that point was raised in the comments, so thank you for your opportunity.
I'm well aware of the fact that there are many, many ways of looking at pesticides and all kinds of regulations that can be cited that may or may not mitigate the problems surrounding them. But please.
So, yeah, no, and thank you for allowing me just a moment to do this. One thing we're committed to is, in farming, the grapes is not using commercial pesticides. A row crop farmer, if I were to grow soybeans there or corn, I'd be using glyphosate, which is basically Roundup to kill weeds, and I would be using 24D, which is deathly to wine grapes. We don't use that stuff. When it comes to managing mold and mildew in the area, one of the reasons we picked the site is because of the tremendous amount of airflow. Having said all of that, we would probably use organic items like sulfur and very low amounts of copper. It would be sprayed in the morning because it's the best time of day to do it, so it's on the vine, and it stays on the fruit. And Mr. Green said he doesn't care if we grow grapes. And quite frankly, we could grow grapes there right now without changing the zoning on it. It's an agricultural property. And so, in either case, we could do that, but whether it's a zone for that or whether we grow grapes under its current zoning, we would still have to do things to mitigate this. And so, I don't mean to, I just don't think that should really factor into the discussion because it's moot. We could do that right now, without any change in zoning whatsoever. So thank you for your time.
Yes, I certainly agree with that. But while sulfur and copper may both exist naturally as elements, neither of them are considered to be what you would call organic solutions. Copper in particular, actually, it remains permanently in the soil. But I do agree that this is something that you can do by right.
So at this point, we should probably take a vote, yes, on the rezone. Knowing that it, we might have a split vote, I'm going to ask Mr. Cockrell to call roll. So all those in favor of ordinance 2023-10, the Rolson rezone, please indicate, you'll indicate by aye.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
No.
Commissioner Jones.
I'm sorry, I know you've worked really hard with the residents, and I really appreciate the effort you've made, but these residents have been there for too long. I, I'm afraid I cannot support this. No?
Motion fails, two to one.
Thank you. We still have a couple of items on our agenda.
Moving through of ordinance 2023-11, North Park PUD Amendment Number Five.
Second. And we have Ms. Criscilia's here.
Good morning. So this is for the North Park Planned, North Park PUD, so Planned Unit Development Outline Plan Amendment Number Five, and this is to change Section Eight, Street and Alternative Transportation Guidelines. So the petition site is multiple parcels located in Bloomington Township, Section 19, 27, and 30. It's approximately 24 parcels totaling a construction area of about 5.1 acres. So the petitioner, which is the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission and Kreider &amp; Kreider, Inc., is requesting to amend the North Park PUD ordinance and has submitted a development plan for the construction of the Hunter Valley Road Extension from North Curry Pike, from the intersection of State Road 46 to Hunter Valley Road to the intersection of West Arlington Road. The Planned Unit Development, Development Plan for the road construction is pending approval based on your vote today for the outline plan amendment. If there is an approval here today, the development plan will go into final stages of review. The petitioners have been, have accelerated this petition process in order to start construction of this road connector with the spring months. Okay. So the outline plan request is to change the specific street construction guidelines and required street connections of the North Park PUD ordinance. So the construction plans, there's kind of two facets to the change of the outline plan. There's kind of one group of changes and a second group of changes. The first group of changes is specifically needed for the construction, for that development plan that I mentioned, that is exclusively for the construction of this Hunter Valley Road Extension. And that would be for approximately 2,500 feet of roadway, including a new bridge. And so this is the general area that we're looking at for the road construction. All right. So this, as we can see, this is the zoning of this area, and we can see that a good majority of it is the North Park PUD. So just for your reference, these are the specific parts of the ordinance that we're looking at, which means that as North Park, as properties within the North Park PUD develop, that certain roads are triggered in order to be built with those development plans. So currently, the development plans for the road construction, their engineers with Bynum Fanyo have been working very closely with the Highway Department. The Highway Engineer has reviewed these plans, and they agree with the plans as drafted. So once constructed, the connection will satisfy the following requirements under the North Park ordinance, which is under those street guidelines, Number Five and Number So in this area, the comprehensive plan identifies it as mixed-use, open space, and quarry landscape districts in the Monroe County Urbanizing Area Plan. Looking at environmental factors, the site contains a bridge crossing regulated floodplain. So this is the floodplain area. It's designated as Required Open Space or Linear Park within the North Park PUD. It's also referred to as Vegetative Conservation Area on Page 120 of the North Park ordinance. So the North Curry Pike area was platted with the North Park Type D and E Administrative Subdivisions in 2011. These properties- These properties are currently vacant and are designated as a Use District A under the North Park Ordinance, which contains multiple different permitted use areas. So this road connector is considered a high priority by the Monroe County Highway Department. So they've been supportive of these changes so far, and we'll review those in detail. Okay. So this first group of changes are four changes to that Section Eight. So the first one is a reduction of dedicated right-of-way. So currently, the ordinance requires that there's a minimum of 120 feet dedicated for right-of-way. Based on the design that they've gone back and forth with the Highway Engineer and what they can actually obtain in this area, there are some areas that they can meet 120 feet, and then there's some areas where they had to take less based on structures close to the road because they're, you know, it's all through right-of-way acquisition. So we allow a variation of 60 feet to 120 feet, and I'll show images of what that design looks like. The next standard is that this Section Eight had a lot of very specific detail regarding road construction, which normally we would, if we were to, say, create a new PUD today, we would leave that up to the Highway Department. And a lot of this detail was included in the PUD ordinance, and it now doesn't necessarily match up with the current Highway Department classification. So the North Park Ordinance classified this roadway as a minor arterial boulevard and secondary arterial road, which really Highway Department would recognize this road as a major collector classification and wants to use those standards. The next item is removal of street trees. Street trees are required to be planted on both sides of the roadway, and the petitioner is requesting to remove the requirement for street trees in this area. The fourth point is a reduction of speed. The ordinance requires that there's a minimum of 40 miles per hour for all roads, and the design of this road, really because there's a curve towards the east side, would really only allow 30 miles per hour. Okay. So this is an overview of what the whole new road construction would look like. So there is a four-foot sidewalk on the north side of the road and an eight-foot side path on the south side. So this first section of the road, if we're moving from west to east, we're going to encounter a precast bridge that's going to connect over Stout's Creek. That's that regulated floodplain. We can see 120 feet of dedicated right-of-way here, and this is recognized as Flood Zone AE. This work in the regulated floodplain will require a local development and floodplain permit, which the engineers have already started coordinating with our floodplain administrator on. The next portion where you see the roadway has, the dedicated right-of-way has shrunk down to 90 feet, just based on right-of-way acquisition in the area. And then the next section, there is a property that has a structure in close proximity to the road, so they had to narrow it down. Originally, they had requested 60 feet. They were actually able to get 75 feet of dedicated right-of-way, but staff is still supportive of allowing 60 feet in case anything changes here. But as of right now, their plans as they stand, they don't see any changes, and that this area would be 75 feet of dedicated right-of-way. It's going to bump back up to 90 feet for pretty much the rest of the road. Okay. So that's the first group of changes specifically for the construction of the Hunter Valley Road Extension. Now, we are going into the next group of changes, which are being brought forward simply because any change to the North Park Ordinance is going to require an outline plan amendment. So planning staff, you know, when they talked about doing these changes for the road constructions, said, hey, are you, you know, are you looking at any other changes in the area? This is the time to review it. Otherwise, you have to go through this process again. So the petitioner has identified that there are other road connections in this area that they no longer feel are needed for various reasons. So the first one is a road connection from Curry Pike to Hunter Valley, and this is specifically referred to as B-21 in the North Park Ordinance. So it would come off of, let's see, 46 and go north in a cul-de-sac. This property, we had originally identified that this was supposed to connect to Arlington Road, and we had concerns about very narrow parcel width. But on further review, we found out that the road really is supposed to go up in cul-de-sac, so not necessarily connect. So it really is supposed to be just built, constructed prior to the development plan. The petitioner is stating that this parcel had a buildable area and that the design of the road could easily be accommodated to whatever is actually goes into this property one day versus being required under Section Eight to construct this outlet that goes north and ends in a cul-de-sac. So Highway Engineer Paul Satterley had originally reviewed this and was supportive of removing this, is it's not really a road connector anymore, but is very specifically defined under the Section Eight chapter of the ordinance. The next road connection is from North Stone Branch Drive to Stony Brook Boulevard, and this is B-20 in the ordinance. So this connection would go through North Stone Branch Drive to the Stony Brook Boulevard, which is established and platted as kind of a smaller, a more dense subdivision. So the Highway Engineer had stated that the roadway connection in this area would encourage cut-through traffic between Curry Pike, South 46, and Arlington Road, and that the cut-through traffic has negative impacts on these subdivisions. So they're supporting removal, removing this required connection. And then the third change is the removal of, from North Stone Branch Drive, which is technically on the southern end of, south of Stone Branch Drive, to Hunter Valley Road. So this is supposed to loop up through the county commissioner-owned property, which was quarried. So the Highway Engineer states that the purpose of this roadway was to provide access to the adjacent property, that the land is owned by the county, and that there's interest in using the property for a county park, that the use as a property would not require a loop road access, and that access could be provided connecting Stone Branch Drive or Hunter Valley Road. There have been, there has been an environmental study that has been completed that demonstrates how impractical and difficult it would be to construct a road to county standards crossing over these areas that have been quarried. So there are open pits generally in this area where the road is shown as being constructed. Okay. So based on these changes, staff had requested that North Stone Branch Drive, so since that last removal, if this change is requested, we have, we asked them to throw in language to the ordinance that would require that this North Stone Branch Drive be altered to end in a cul-de-sac. So they've included that new language. We do have that shown in Exhibit C. Exhibit Two is the outline plan for the specific section with track changes. So you can see the languages that, the language that they've removed and the languages that they've added. So they've pretty much mimicked the same language for building a whole road for this cul-de-sac. So depending on a north or south parcel is going to be developed, then the new property owner's going to have to build out a cul-de-sac and finalize that road. And we prefer roads that end like that, not to dead-end directly into a property if there's not going to be further development. It allows emergency vehicles to be able to turn around safely. Okay. So the first public meeting on this with the Plan Review Committee, who offers a recommendation based on the consistency with the comprehensive plan and the Plan Commission, they did not forward a recommendation, and we just went through some general questions and asked for more information. One of the big questions was, why were the roads originally needed? And upon research in the North Park Ordinance, it was that a former highway director, Bill Williams, when they were working on the North Park Ordinance, they had requested that information. He provided a very, very detailed memo of the standards and connector roads that they had requested to see, and they were included in the North Park Ordinance, which is why we see such specific detail. We, they had asked for, you know, comments from the Highway Engineer, which are included, and they also discussed possibly retiring a name. Specifically, we talked about possibly retiring West Hunter Valley Road at that time. So we started looking into the fact that we would need a road name change, or at least address the road names here, since that we're going to be connecting two different roads with different aims. Okay. So the Plan Commission had a final hearing just here in March. They voted to forward a positive recommendation to the commissioners for this outline plan amendment request. The staff recommendation had originally included that the, a condition that said the petitioner applied for a road name change to retire West Hunter Valley Road. We had a good discussion at the Plan Commission. They heard from the Monroe County Historic Preservation Committee, and I'll show that here in just a second. But ultimately, they chose to alter that condition to only include the following, which is petitioner applied for a road name change. And that is because a road name change is a public hearing process approved, reviewed, and approved by the Plan Commission. So the Monroe County Historic Preservation Committee, they provided some background and some really interesting history on West Hunter Valley Road. So we removed, you know, the specific language to retire West Hunter Valley Road and just said, apply for this road name change since it'll be needed, and they can have that public hearing and discuss the history of the area. So this is the letter that the Historic Preservation Board of Review included. It's quite in-depth. I'm sure you've already read it. And they also included a historic map of the area and highlight that, you know, this whole region, that whole kind of subsection was referred to as Hunter Valley. And I know I've heard from you commissioners before and from the Plan Commission, they were all very excited about this. So I think there will be a very good conversation about what ultimately the road name change will be. So that is why the condition is just left vague. So ultimately, the staff recommendation for this ordinance 2023-11 is that staff recommends approval of the Planned Unit Outline Plan Amendment request based on the findings of fact with the following condition, or condition that the petitioner apply for a road name Does anybody have any questions?
Commissioner Jones, questions?
I'm sorry. You speak very quickly, and I did not quite catch the last bit about the, so there will be no name change of the road unless the petitioner requests it?
It will be needed, but Plan Commission went ahead to go ahead and build that in. Actually, it was planning staff that included that as a condition, but we had originally had a recommendation to retire West Hunter Valley Road. And with discussion at the Plan Commission, they, with their motion to recommend a positive recommendation, they chose to alter the condition to just petitioner apply for a road name change, and that will at least get the process started.
Okay. Thank you. I understand that.
I believe we could make it clearer, because this is something that we talked about when this was brought before our work session, is the idea of naming what is currently Curry Pike at the intersection of Smith. That part of Curry Pike gets renamed to Hunter Valley Road, as does the remainder of this new roadway in North Park. It makes sense. Curry's not north at that point. It's east-west almost at that point anyway. So having a North Curry doesn't make sense, and there's not a lot of, all of the development that's in that area is on a separate, other-named roadway anyway. So it's not going to create a big hassle for businesses or residents because there's just not that many. So I, I don't know if it would be helpful for us to actually change the condition to read that way instead of, because it's a pointless condition right now, honestly. It's pointless. It just says road name change. Well, okay. So I just think we should give it some direction if we're going to do it, or we just drop the condition. But I'd really like to see this historic background of our county honored in an appropriate way with that name change running from the intersection, the roundabout at Curry and Smith Pike becomes, that part of Curry Pike becomes Hunter Valley Road.
So are you making a motion?
Sure.
All right. Well, in addition to that, that would be an amendment. So is there?
That would be a condition. That would be a condition that we would be adding to this petition, which we can do, and it's going to go back to the Plan Commission anyway, so I don't think it matters.
Okay. So is there any, any of the petitioners here to speak in favor of this petition?
And I guess I just know for the record, I represent, I handle the Redevelopment Commission, and they are part of this. So I guess technically, I'm part of the petitioners. I would just like to let you know that this completion of Hunter Valley to Arlington and the bridge has been in the, in that TIFs plan since its inception. Again, there were big plans when that started, and this completion was kind of the highest priority. We sat down probably two years ago with the Redevelopment Commission, and we outlined what were the next priorities, and this one was by far the greatest priority, with the other two priorities are essentially, if you're driving down 46, you'll see two stubs to that highway. Connecting those back to Hunter Valley Road, I guess, with that amendment at this point were the other two highest priority uses. So we've actually gone ahead and with the county council approving the, a TIF bond to fund this road project, and this is part of the process. We had a number of meetings with Mr. Kreider and his professionals, and Paul Satterley with the Highway Department, as well as members of the Redevelopment Commission to talk about a lot of the designs and those kind of things of this roadway. So from the Redevelopment Commission's perspective, we really think that that roadway is important. And we also think that, given the fact that the county owns a property to the south of it, and that it's the intended uses for some kind of public event space or park space, that the lower speed limit for that roadway was something we would request irregardless of whether the design required it.
Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. We have someone else here to speak. Please identify yourself and sign in.
My name is Jeff Fanyo with Bynum Fanyo Associates, and I represent Steve Kreider, Kreider &amp; Kreider, and Logan Land Development. We have nothing to add to the staff report. We agree with it. We appreciate the recommendation for approval from the Plan Commission. I did have one question. If you make a change to the recommendation from the Plan Commission, can you approve this petition today? And does that, just that condition go back to the Plan Commission? Or do we have to run this whole thing back through?
That condition goes back before the Plan Commission. It's not a whole new petition. It just gets, it just puts it before them and ensures that they hear it, and then they comment, and then if we have to rehear it, we can. But if there's no issue, it stays the way it is. I just, I just think that the current condition is pointless, and it bothers me that it's sitting there because, you know, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to have it at all, but.
We're in agreement that we would put forth a petition to change the name to Hunter Valley Road from the roundabout to Arlington Road, and we'll pursue that. I just want to make sure that we weren't delayed from construction this year.
Yeah, yeah, and that would be my only concern, is delaying any kind of construction. So, you know, I'm okay relying on your word because I know you, and you've had a lot of petitions before us, and, you know. So I'm okay relying on your word for that, but that's our, that's our wish, is to have that, that whole part of Curry become Hunter Valley. So I appreciate that, and I'll withdraw the change to the condition.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this one? Amendment, North Park PUD amendment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against? Do either? Do either of my colleagues have anything else I want to add to this? If not, um, I'll ask Mr. Cockrell to call for roll, call on this one also.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda. We do have one appointment.
Yes, I move to affirm the appointment of, uh, Dr. Clark Britton as, uh, Monroe County Health Officer.
Second.
Yeah, I'm excited to have Dr. Britton involved with us, and, um, do we take public comment on appointments? Didn't think so. Okay. So with that, uh, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, three to zero. Welcome, Dr. Britton. Several announcements, again, if you need assistance from FEMA, which is available for Monroe County residents affected by the recent tornadoes, please apply at www dot disasterassistance dot gov, or you can call eight hundred six-two-one-three-three-six-two for more information. Um, the application deadline is June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. You can also reach out to, um, our Emergency Management Department for assistance. Um, absentee in-person voting is underway, and it will conclude at noon on May the first at Election Operations at Third and Wa- South Walnut Street. Uh, Election Day is May the second for residents of Bloomington and Elletsville. You can go to, um, the election, uh, website to find exactly where your voting place is, um, but the polls will be open on Election Day from six AM to six PM. Please vote, it's your chance to make a difference in democracy. Um, as we heard from Ms. Kelly earlier on, free COVID testing is available at Monroe County Health Department at one nineteen West Seventh Street, as well as the Monroe County House Clinic on East Miller Drive. We are still accepting applications for boards and commissions at co.monroe.in.us. The commissioners have virtual office hours via Zoom six times a month. You can identify when those are at our county calendar, um, and if you wish to talk with one of us, please join us. Those events are not recorded. Uh, you can do that at co.monroe.in.us. There are upcoming blood drives, um, May the eleventh from ten to three, May the twelfth from one to six, Wednesday, June the fourteenth from one to six, and Friday, June the sixteenth from ten to three, and there'll be subsequent ones as well, but they are at Ivy Tech Shreve Hall, um, and are cosponsored by Monroe County. Please sign up for Resident Alerts, again, at our website, and we want to make sure everyone knows that the commissioners and the County Council have extended the Assistance Fund for county residents who need assistance in paying their rent or utilities, and if that's the situation you find yourself in, please contact your township trustee. The information on those individuals is at our website again. Thank you, everyone, for a very long meeting, for your patience, and for your attendance. With that, we'll conclude. We have no work session, and so we will see you back here next week on May the third. Sorry, I had to do this in my head. Thank you all.